Call to meeting to order. Those in attendance please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues to this regularly scheduled September the sixteenth, two thousand nineteen city council minute meeting. Uh, as you come in through the doors to my right over there, there'll be a sign in sheet on the desk, please sign your name. City clerk, may I please have a roll call vote?
Councilperson Bell, Briner.
Here.
Veer.
Here.
Morrissey.
Here.
Sharp.
Here.
Stutcher.
Here.
Councilperson Pratt.
Here.
Sizer. Mayor Stockford.
Here.
Seven-two absent.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, we'll move into approval of agenda items. Does the city manager and any members of council have any changes they'd like to make to the agenda? I have two changes I'd like to make to the agenda, uh, additions under communications petitions. Item D, I'd like to add Gordmans, um, grand opening. And under new business, item C, I would like to add leaf pickup contest. Do I have a motion to support those changes?
So moved.
For.
Motion on the floor from councilman Morrissey, seconded by councilman Briner to make those changes to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
For.
Motion on the floor from councilman Morrissey, seconded by councilman Briner to approve the amended agenda. May I please have a roll call vote, city clerk?
Councilperson Briner?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stutcher?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Seven-zero approved.
Thanks, Katie. We will move into public comment on agenda items only. Um, during this time, the podium will be open, please limit your comments to five minutes. Please limit your trips to one trip to the podium. Um, please state your name. And, uh, understand per our city council rules that there will be no correspondence between council and the residents while somebody is at the podium. Podium's open.
Joseph Hendy, one eighty-one Ria Street. Mayor and council wanted to talk a little bit about Tifa tonight. Tifas are typically formed in an effort to halt a decline in property values, increase property tax valuation, eliminate the cause of decline in property values and promote growth within the Tifa district. Tifa must meet all four of these criterias to continue with the program. Property values in the city have increased, eliminating the need for Tifa. However, how, excuse me, how effective is Tifa? Many questions question whether it is cost justified and most stress the fact that it is now used for a broader range of development projects than originally intended. Taker increment financing was conceived as a tool to address urban blight, not as a financing source for general expenditures. I also believe Tifa is in direct conflict with the Home Rule City Act. City officials can dissolve Tifa and spending on projects in the communities, Tifa authority district by freezing spending. Tifa is biased and Mary and Gary Wilfroam's projects do not benefit the community as a whole. They are just writing community into the grant language to get the money for the projects that benefit the college. Not only that, but the projects that are being put forward have little to no value to the average resident and they're capturing future generations of property taxes. Tifa proved that with Rough Draft. All the residents got for the seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of state grant money and over three hundred thousand dollars in local tax abatement was a coffee shop. It was a travesty. And again, Mary and Gary. Also, the college expressed the need for student housing, which was reported on by, which was reported by the collegiate and every apartment in the building is rented to students. The C and CL Enterprises is a college donor who is, who is a large donor to the college. CNL Enterprises has an office in Rough Draft building and are donors to the college along with Andrew Fink, who is a Hillsdale College graduate. Hillsdale Policy Group has the same address as the college, thirty-three College Street. That's not speculation, I can prove it. Tifa needs to dissolve. Tifa needs, needs to be dissolved and the catering to the college needs to stop. I'm going to remind you that Hillsdale College is a private college and claims to take no state or federal money. Not directly or indirectly. Tifa is now broke and has no money left to attract new businesses and pay Hillsdale Policy Group and, and exactly what, why Mary wants back on the board. Also, Tifa now wants to borrow two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our public utility, BPU, which is a public entity. Tifa needs to be dissolved and the spending needs to be frozen. Council has this power and authority to do this. And other cities have done this just, have done just that. Marine City, Michigan being one example. Tifa is broke and can't even give Mr. Walters the ten thousand dollars for the Palace Cafe that was promised to him and was reported on by the Hillsdale Daily News. They can't give any faceted grants either and are unable to attract small businesses. Tifa is hurting the other business owners. Let the Don Governance Board go around you, Mr. Mayor, please. Let them run themselves into the ground and let this body have no part of it. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we will close the podium and we will move on to consent, the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city claims of August twenty-second, BPU claims of August twenty-second, payroll of September fifth. Uh, we've got city council minutes of September third. Two noise variance, variance requests from Hillsdale College, one for the sports complex, one for FI SIG Alumni Association tent party. Street closure for Hillsdale College homecoming activities. Um, we've got our Hillsdale County Parade on there. Uh, we've got bylaw changes to the Michigan South Central Power Agency. Uh, power, power plant battery system upgrade bid re-award and repair and media replace water, replacement water treatment plant filter number two. Is there any discussion of any of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor from councilman Morrissey, seconded by councilman Veer to approve the consent agenda. May please have a roll call vote, city clerk?
Councilperson Veer?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stutcher?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
And councilperson Briner?
Yes.
Seven-zero approved.
Thank you, Katie. We will move on to communications and petitions. Um, item A, planning commission meeting agenda is on here for September seventeenth, which would be tomorrow. Second item is Tifa has a meeting and their agenda on here, is on here for tomorrow. Why are we putting the agendas in communications petitions? Just out of curiosity.
I, I decided to do that, Mayor, because there's been some question lately about council not knowing about specific items.
Okay.
And we thought the best way to communicate that was to put the agendas, if we have them in advance, on the, under communications.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Dave. Item C, uh, State of Michigan Special Tribute to the Don Theater. This is a certificate, uh, from our state representative, Eric Lloydhauser. And then item D is, uh, the one I added. Gordmans is moving into the old Peebles Building next to Kroger. I'm sure you guys have, uh, have seen the sign change up there and everything. Tomorrow, they're having a ribbon cutting and grand opening at nine AM. Um, the public is invited, of course. I done, have done a little bit of research on Gordmans and it appears that it's, uh, similar to a TJ Maxx. If you guys know what a TJ Maxx is, it's kind of, um, you know, discounted prices on name brand stuff. I don't know if they're seconds or things that didn't sell in the, in the, in the main brand stores or whatever, but, um, I'm excited about it. I think it'll be a good addition to the community. Any discussion about any of the items in communications petitions? Seeing none, we will move into public hearing. Introduction and adoption of ordinances, public hearing. Item A, public hearing to order public nuisance demolition of sixty-five, sixty-five and a half Westwood Street. Okay, Alan, would you like to talk about this? I don't see, oh, there's Alan.
So last month, you passed a resol-, uh, resolution or an ordinance or a resolution to, uh, declare sixty-five and sixty-five and a half, uh, Westwood a public nuisance uh, and gave the owner thirty days to either, uh, either take care of the issue or demolish it. Neither has been done, as you can see by the photographs before and, uh, just a couple of days before, actually the day that the packet was put together. Um, and so, um, uh, under advisement from the city attorney, uh, was, uh, we needed to have a public hearing that would, uh, that would publicly inform the owner of the next step, which is the city taking, uh, the, uh, the initiative and demolishing the property. So that's what this is about.
Okay. I see there's a resolution in here too.
Mm-hmm.
So, we are literally voting to demolish the place tonight.
Correct.
Okay. Well, uh, is there any questions for Alan?
Yes, I have one.
Go ahead, Greg.
Just, just out of curiosity, how do we allow a structure to go this far that we have to demolish it?
Well, the, it probably should have, it should have been demolished about a year ago. Um, the, uh, when there was a fire in, uh, on the second floor, uh, he was given six months.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, there were some changes within, within the, uh, the company and there was a new representative that I was dealing with. And we were promised that he would, um, uh, that he would, uh, set it out, send it out for bid to get, to have someone come in and actually fix it to, um, to restore it to a single family dwelling and then fix it up, correct all of the, um, correct the damage from the fire and the other issues and then, uh, and then sell it. And none of that happened, so that's why we're...
Yeah, I, okay, I understand the story, but it's like, I guess I'm concerned about people who live in the area who have property next to that and how do we protect their investment? And it just seems like, okay, I mean, we can go on a promise and a wink and a smile for so long, but there seems to be certain actions that have to happen before we get this far. I mean, I'm just asking.
Right, and there, there is due process.
I mean...
If I may, part of the, the issue is the code enforcement. Um, uh, I hate to say procedure, the code enforcement process you have to go through. Um, really, the city has fairly limited remedies when you think about it. So the way ordinarily this would work is if you see a property, and this is the way it does in fact work, uh, if there's a property that has some issues, code violations, um, a citation can be issued and you end up in district court. I go down to district court. If we can't resolve it by getting, you know, cajoling, whatever we need to do, the property owner to actually bring the property into compliance, and we have some tools to use as incentives to do that, such as, you know, we'll dismiss the ticket if you get the stuff fixed in the next ninety days or something like that. Barring that, the only thing you can do is you can then have a hearing, a trial and formal hearing in front of the district court judge, and the district court judge can make a finding that the property is in violation of every code under the sun. And the court can even, as part of that, not only assess fines and costs, but also enter an order that says you either have to fix it up or tear it down, or the city can go in and fix it up or tear it down at your expense. The problem we have there is, is you're left of the same situation where it's at the city's expense. The determina-, determination then has to be made still by council, whether or not you want to spend the money to do that. So that whole process in and of itself takes months to get through.
But it sounds like we're allowing people to have tax havens, not to invest in property, let them run down because there's no stick.
Well, they have to pay for this demolition, the city just doesn't pay for it.
Yeah, ultimately, the problem we have though is it becomes a lien on the property. So that's one of the issues that municipalities have. When you vote to spend the funds to take a property down, and in the past when we've done it, it's because we were able to get grants through Kim's, uh, application from the state that helped pay for that. Um, but you have to spend the money, not knowing if you'll ever get it back. Uh, because unless the property is sold, uh, or if it goes down the taxes, you might end up having spent the money.
But in the meantime, somebody can buy a piece of property for a tax write-off. Let it go, let it go, let it go. And the people around property values, their, their sellability drops and we can do nothing?
I didn't say we can do nothing. We can do this process or the same process just through the district court. You end up in the same place.
I'm just wondering if we need to look at our ordinances, I mean, how we enforce it so we have a little bit more teeth, I mean...
The, the ordinance is exact, there isn't any more you can do, right? The ultimate thing is you can either get an order of the court saying it has to be demolished at the taxpayer or the, the property owner's expense with it goes a lien on the property, or we can go through this process and bypass the court, this is a little bit quicker, um, and have the public hearing here and do the same thing. But because of due process and because of the only things you're allowed to do, both under the constitution, the United States and the Michigan constitutions, and under the statutes applicable to blight ordinance enforcement, this is the way it works and this is pretty much the timeframe that, that you're dealing with. So if you wanted to do something different, you would have to address that on several legislative levels, both at the state and, uh, at the federal level too.
Can residents form, uh, homeowners associations in the city limits? Is that an option that's open to residents, um, who this might be, uh, concerned that they want to? Cause I understand everything you're saying and we won't, I, I...
Right.
It always, code enforcement, as Alan knows, and we've had a, a number of discussions on it, always concerns me because of private property issues and because, you know...
That's exactly...
Some people's standards of what they think their neighbors' houses should look like are really high.
And that's why...
And then other people just let their properties go.
That's why the process is, has all the steps it has to it. Because of that, you have to have somebody who's, uh, an arbiter, in this case tonight it's you, make that determination, or if you go through district court, it's the district court judge who's going to decide that. I do have to say, in, you know, most of the, the cases that we have that of ordinance enforcement, we are able to get, um, compliance or at least an agreement for compliance from the property owner. And then we just enter a judgment with their consent that says if you don't fix it by such and such a time, we can come in and take care of it. But you have to be careful too in how you approach enforcement because, you know, some people have financial barriers to being able to fix the properties and that sort of thing. So, to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, if you were to form a local property...
If a street, if one street decided that they wanted to, that they wanted to ensure that their neighborhood was held up to a certain standard, could they form a homeowners association within the city limits?
If they wanted... If they wanted to have an informal voluntary association, right? That you can't, the only way that you can create a homeowners association and people are required to be a part of it is if one person owns all the property and when they go to deed it all out, they put deed restrictions that require that. Otherwise, you can form informal neighborhood associations or that sort of thing that are on a volunteer basis. The problem you would have then is, you know, how are you going to help people keep their properties up who maybe aren't able to do that? Um, if it's a matter of finances, maybe the people in the neighborhood could help in some fashion or direct people to grants or something else that might be available. But otherwise, it's a difficult problem because they really don't have any authority to tell somebody else in their neighborhood what to do. That authority rests with the city and, and the, uh, the court system and your body here and we have to follow that process unfortunately.
Did you have a councilman Sharp?
Oh, yes, yes, I do. That house is four houses from where I live. It's been a dump for a long time. It has squatters going in and out of it. As you see in the pictures, it's exactly what it looks like. I whipped by it just before I came to council meeting, it hasn't changed. That gentleman owns that house, doesn't care.
Well, I happen to be the one who owns it and I do care.
Good, you do care, then why haven't you responded? Sir, we can't communicate each other.
Just, just so we're clear, the purpose of the public hearing is, one of the main purposes is their, their, our case is one that comes out of the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, federal case from the state of Michigan that provides if you were going to take this sort of action, you have to have a public hearing and give the property owner notice and an opportunity to be heard, which, um, if Mr. Sawyer would like to come up and address the council, he, this is his time to do that.
Yeah, before I open up the podium to the public, would you like to, to take the podium? Uh, is that Sailor?
Yeah, Sell.
Mr. Sailor?
I'm the person who owns the house. Um, I do care and I know it's a nuisance. Um, there was a screw-up with my insurance and it wasn't covered. And so I've been trying to work this summer to save the money to try to do something to it, but he has gave me ample opportunity and I understand it's, it's a nuisance to you, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm trying to get it around. I was trying to keep it from putting in the dumpster, but if, I'll just, if you give me a paper or something, I'll sign it and I'll, I'll destroy it here and as soon as I can get a contractor in there and I'll put it in the dumpster. Um, I, I was working on trying to save it, but let's just put it in the dumpster and be done with it, it's fine.
Do you own, uh, do, is this the only property you own in the city or do you own...
No, I have like eight or nine houses in Hillsdale.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sailor?
I'm all for what he just said.
Okay.
Okay.
They just have one, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Out of eight or nine properties, do you have any ordinance violations on those? Any of those?
I don't, I don't think I do. I might have to have, I might have some inspections I gotta do, don't I? Yeah, I think I brought them all up pretty, pretty much, you know?
Okay.
It's just a hard matter with, with the way the cash flow is nowadays. Used to be, you know, you're, you're, you had a little more profit there and it seems like it's getting narrower and narrower. You know, but, thank you.
Councilman Sharp?
Oh, no, step away yet, I'm not done. Um, do you, do you own seventy Westwood Street?
Nope.
You, you still own that though at one time?
No, I never did.
Okay, good. What about sixty and fifty-eight West, or West Street? Did you own those?
I did own those, you know, and it's kind of funny that you bring that up because I sold those five or six years ago and they were out me to at least tear them down or do something. And then I sold them five or six years ago to a contractor, I think, I think the gentleman's from Coldwater, but it's funny, they've not made him do anything since the time that I've sold it. You know, and then all of a sudden mine comes up, but I understand mine's a nuisance and I'm sorry. I understand that.
I appreciate your honesty here.
Really, I, I've been, I've been trying to, I wanted to save it, but we can get rid of it.
I would appreciate that because the neighbors around there and I'm talking on Ripon Street, they've been complaining about it.
Okay.
What's going to be done, what's going to be done? And I appreciate you coming up here and being honest.
Well, if I wouldn't have screwed up with my insurance, I work full-time and I own two or three party stores around town, or I mean, out in the county and I'm just too busy, honestly, to be honest with you. And I missed it, I didn't realize, I thought it was great when it caught on fire, we'd get it all fixed up, it'd be a blessing, but, and then my insurance agent even told me that I'll get somebody over there fixing it up and he called me the next day and says, "That house isn't insured." So it was a screw-up on my part as well as his part, honestly.
Could you give us an honest timeline when you have that tore down then?
Well, I'll have to talk, you know, I have to talk to some contractors because they're pretty busy right now, so I'm gonna have to get in line, honestly. Cause I called a couple contractors to come and give me prices of how much to fix it up and they never did get back with me, honestly. You know, but I, I don't know who to pick, who to pick. I called two of them and then I, I seen a Moore Construction sign. I drive truck full-time over in Jonesville, I called him and he didn't return my call. But, you know, I just think they're busy, I'll, I will work on it as soon as I, I mean, I, if you give me a certain time, I'll tell them and see if they can get in and do it, but I, I don't know until I talk to somebody. You know, to put it in the dumpster.
I would like thirty days? You just give a date and that's it. There's always an excuse, there's always a reason, you give a date and that's it, you move. Okay, then I think we should come up with a date. And then if it isn't, then we, then we have to act. To me, it's tomorrow.
Councilman Briner?
Um, do you want to fix it up? What are your goals?
No, we'll just, we'll just tear it down. I mean, I, I really wanted to, because I moved in there when I was eighteen and I thought we'd fix it up, but we'll just put it in the dumpster.
It's in pretty bad shape.
It really is not in very bad shape, hon, it needs a new roof, I mean, if you, have you been in it? Yeah, but I mean, really honestly, it's pretty structurally sound, honestly. It was just a little fire up on top. The, the tenant, it put the, uh, he wasn't supposed to be up there, he ran a cord from the downstairs up to the upstairs and it, it caught, uh, some blankets on fire and it just smoldered, you know?
But you've had windows missing up there that, for over two years.
I know, the people keep going in there digging with it and I, I boarded up and stuff, but I, I understand your, your frustrations, I do.
Thirty days.
Do you think thirty days is...
Well, fifteen. Fifteen, there you go, fifteen.
I mean, it's the same story, what's going to change?
I know, but I don't want to spend the city's money on this if we don't have to, if he's offering to tear it down himself, so. That, that's my opinion. You guys can, we can all, we can vote, go whichever way we want, but I'd rather give him a few, a couple extra weeks and not have to spend the residents' money.
I thought you said earlier that he's gonna pay for it anyway. You want to pay for the, the demolition?
Yeah, we're, we can bill him for it through his taxes, but once we've tore the place down, the incentive to pay, I mean, it could be...
It'll go to a tax sale before we get our money, I mean...
Thirty days.
And even, even in, we're not gonna get to it thirty days, so.
What do you, what date are you picking?
Councilman Veer?
Well, I was just thinking, we're about mid-September and, uh, contractors are pretty busy. I would say in good faith, uh, say by, uh, November first, which would be forty-five days.
Forty-five days? Do you think you can bring it down at that time?
Yep, we'll get started on it.
Okay.
I'll call tomorrow.
I still, uh, since this is a public hearing, I still have to open the podium and allow the public to speak.
May, may I ask what, what the consequence is if it's not torn down by November one?
I guess we just...
Other than he just walks away and we pay for it?
I guess we bring for it, we, we vote on this resolution right here and we tear it down ourselves, uh, and then bill him for it, but I would mention, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, but I would mention that the gentleman has an omni-source hat on, uh, so he's aware that there's probably a couple thousand dollars worth of copper piping in there. So there's incentive for him to tear it down and not let us tear it down.
I'm good, okay, thank you.
So, let's make a reservation for that.
Well, let me open, I gotta, uh, edit. Uh, so the podium's now open, same rules apply, one trip to the podium, uh, please limit your comments to five minutes and understand per our council rules that we're not going to be corresponding back and forth between the audience. Podium's now open.
I, I think myself with all the concern you guys have had lately about the historic homes, that this house is probably over a hundred years old, just like the brick ones on Westwood and, or on West Street. You know, maybe you guys are pretty strong about your feelings about tearing them down, maybe you ought to think about this one. I mean, you know, I agree, I, don't shake your head, I'm looking over at the other side of the council, they're the ones that's complaining about the historic homes. But, and I think forty-five days is pretty short. If he ends up, there's asbestos in there or something, he ain't gonna get it done in forty-five days. I think sixty's a much better number. That's gonna be before the snow flies, before the holidays. I mean, you can't, it's either that or you can do like you said. He just won't get it done and you guys will have to pick up the cost and then you can apply it to a vacant piece of ground that you're never gonna collect off from. I mean, that's how I look at it, you're better off, don't cut your nose off to spite your face because that's just exactly what'll happen, so, thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Any more public comment?
I'm with Jack on that. I called to get gutters done and they told me it'd be at least a month. They are so backed up, contractors in this area, you cannot get them to help right now. So I think Jack's idea of a little bit longer would do. Because, um, if you call for any contractor in this area, they will tell you how busy they are and how backed up they are. So I go with the sixty days with Jack.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Seeing no more, I'll close the podium, open up the council table to discussion. Councilman Briner?
I think we should give them longer, um, end of the year, you know? Let contractors do their, do their work and, uh, demolition. It's gonna take a while for them to get it done. And, and like I said, or like, I didn't say, but, um, if we tear it down, it's gonna cost everybody's taxpayer money to tear it down. And we're gonna place a lien on the property, it's gonna go to tax sale because he's not gonna pay for it. It's gonna be a vacant lot at that time, we'll get, what, five, ten grand maybe out of that lot? Um, and so the city's footing the bill. If he's willing to tear it down himself, um, I say we give him ample time to do that. Um, and so the city's footing the bill. If he's willing to tear it down himself, um, I say we give him ample time to do that. Um, and I would be open to giving him until the end of the year. Contractors will slow down, um, it'll start to get cold and that gives them ample time to do it. That's my two cents on it.
Thank you, Councilman Briner. Councilman Beer?
Well, I just, you know, I had some, uh, work done on my garage and, uh, as far as contractors being really busy, it is true. Um, I think I contacted an electrician to do some, put a couple lights in for me in the garage. And I contacted him and, uh, I have to say it was probably late May and he finally, after me pesting him, he finally got to it and actually did it, uh, I'm thinking, uh, week after, uh, Labor Day. And it was, you know, it didn't, it was like, um, probably for him, maybe a couple hour job. But, but of course, good contractors are gonna be sought after, so. And I think going back to the, if the city gets antsy and we go ahead and get it torn down, uh, the city in the end's gonna get stuck with the bill. It's gonna become a lien on the property. Um, and I think it's, uh, not a, if, if the homeowner's willing to undertake it, um, and have, you know, be, um, a good faith effort in it, I'd much rather go that route.
Any more, any more counsel?
I agree.
Motion on the floor to, uh.
Oh, I had, I thought, oh, yeah, I thought Bruce had something, I had something too.
This has been going on for over two years and you're giving them more and more time. You keep saying contractors, the person that could possibly do it, and I know one offhand, Rutt's Trucking over in Reading is one place that could be contacted. You put the bids out there and see what it's gonna take. If you wait till winter, ground's gonna be frozen, they're, they're gonna have a little more fun doing it, digging it up. And also the city's gonna have to go in to make sure, I'm sure the water's shut off, all the meters and everything are gone, but it's gonna have to be marked out. If you give them this much time, then we're basically saying, no, don't do anything, we'll be stuck with the bill. I'm not, I'm not for giving them till the first of the year, I think that's too long. We've been too lenient already. And he says he didn't understand it was this way, but I know Alan has been sending them notifications in the past.
I would just like to add that, I, I agree with Bruce, it's been four or five years since Ben there. Uh, I think Tony's got a great idea of going to give him forty-five days to November first. Of course, after that time, we probably aren't gonna tear it down on November second either, so we give the owner time to tear it down until we get to it, which could be January, it could be February. He's got enough time, but we drop dead on, his date drops dead on November one. And then if he doesn't do it and we end up paying for it, this has to go against his credit rating, against his credit score, because we aren't stuck with this bill without a consequence. There's gotta be a consequence. We've got good people with good homes in this town with sweat equity and their own investment. We can't allow people to come in and do whatever they need to do and just walk away from it. So, my proposal is, we give him till November one and, and if we have to spend the money to tear it down, then there was gotta be a direct impact on his credit rating, if he doesn't pay.
I mean, we don't have the authority to do that though.
Yes, we do.
Right, we don't, we don't have the authority to do that. You only have.
If you were owed money.
You only have the authority to do what the statute allows you to do and what your ordinance allows you to do. And the most you can do is charge the costs of it against the property as a lien, as the super tax.
If he has a tenant that doesn't pay rent, he can put that tenant on a credit rating score. Your time depends, I can't do that to the landlord who does the same thing?
He is not a governmental entity, that's the difference.
This guy wins all day long.
Councilman Briner?
Tax liens are no longer reported on the credit bureaus.
Pardon?
Tax liens are no longer, uh, recorded on credit bureaus.
Wow. Okay.
Dave, go ahead.
Alan, could you come up for a second? My question to you is, did you price out what this would cost for the demolition?
Um, I spoke to a couple of contract, I spoke to three. Um, the only one that actually got back to me and then he didn't really get back with me. But he did give me a ballpark figure of forty-five thousand to have it torn down.
Forty-five thousand to tear it down?
Yep, that was his, cause I asked him if we could do it for twenty and he goes, oh no.
That seems pretty expensive for a small house.
That's what I thought too. But that was, that's, and that's the only, that's the only contractor that, that would even venture an estimate.
What were the last home, homes that we tore down? Weren't they in the ten to fifteen thousand range?
Yep, they, they ranged from twelve to I think seventeen was the most. And those were the ones that were covered under the, the Mishta grant for blight elimination, which has not been available since, since that time, so.
Thank you. I just want the council to know what, if we had a ballpark, forty-five thousand dollars actually would take all their budget sum if that was the cost.
And that did not cover, that did not cover the environmental survey or any abatement if there was any to be abated.
And what do we have in the budget? Is it twenty-five?
Thirty, she had thirty in the budget for all of code enforcement, so not just, that includes, that includes snow removal, that includes mowings, that includes demolition, that includes everything. So, this would destroy her budget plus.
Thank you.
So, Mr. City Manager, how do we protect ourselves from this? I mean, because we, we can't afford to do ordinance, this is in charge, and we can't afford to tear down, the people walk away. I mean, how do we protect our neighbors' investments in their homes? With this, this is a spiral circle down, I mean?
Well, I think I gotta agree that, you know, Mr. Salyer has agreed to tear the, the property down, um.
I'm ecstatic about it, honestly.
We would do an agreement with him. Um, I would say you'll be lucky to get it done in forty-five days, we'd be setting ourselves up for failure. Um, but if we looked at the end of the year or ninety, um, I would think that that would be an adequate time. Alan, did you wanna add anything?
Well, one of the things that we have been doing lately with code enforcement has been working really closely with the, uh, building inspection department. And what we've been doing is rather than the inspection department, um, uh, granting the full, most of their permits are good for a year. And then they're, you're required to have, uh, an inspection within six months in order to keep that permit active. Um, what we've been doing is working with, uh, Ray and Marty to, uh, on a thirty day basis. So the permits are granted for thirty days. At the end of that thirty days, as long as there is significant work being done, then it's granted for an additional thirty days. And that's been working really well because now we have two entities that are, that are enforcing it.
I, just a question, that sounds like we're going after the people who are proactive in improving their property with a building permit. I'm concerned about that.
Um, yes and no, we've had, but we've had, we've had limited success even with those who up to that point have been resistant to working with our office. And by adding the county building inspector to it, we've had a lot more success.
Here's an idea, why don't we talk to the people who do pest control and see where their problem areas are at and start tear? I mean, I'm just, if you have a home that's vested with rodents and whatever not, I mean, our pest control people may know that. It might be a place to go knock on the door. I don't know. I mean, it just seems like the building permit, you're dealing with people who are actually making improvements into their home. And, you know, we don't wanna hinder that, we wanna encourage that.
I think, just to clarify what, what Alan is speaking about, is in those circumstances where we have a, a property that is in the code enforcement process.
Okay.
And the people are going, are saying, we're gonna get that fixed.
Okay, okay.
Instead of having a building permit to take care of that that lasts a long time, we're keeping it on a shorter timeframe. So that they have to show that they're actually working on it in order to keep that permit.
That makes sense.
Right, sorry.
Okay, and I was thinking, somebody wants to, you know, do something in a home and I was.
Yeah, no, this, this wasn't for everybody. No, these are, these are for, these are for code.
Good move, I like that.
Um, and one other thing I would mention, what I would suggest is to the extent here, um, that Mr. Salyer has agreed, he's gonna take it down and you're gonna give him a timeframe. That the way that you do that is, your resolution tonight would be to have our, our office work with Mr. Salyer to prepare an agreement for him to sign. That says, where he's agreeing to do that and if he fails to do that, he is simply agreeing that the city can come in and do it. So we don't have to go through any process to get access to the property and then take care of the issue if he doesn't do it.
Okay. Councilman Sharp? Couldn't we get some angry Amish to come down here and tear it down? Something like that, just something?
Well, that's, I mean, if, 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 if Mr. Salyer wants to pursue that, certainly.
It's just, please, please. The neighborhood, that's the only house in my neighborhood on that whole street that is empty and it's an eyesore. I mean, we talk about trying to beautify our neighborhoods. There's one. I mean, Seventy across the street used to be bad, it's now nice, it's a nice home. The house next to it's an empty lot, had a house fire years back, three children died in it. It sat there for a year and I had to look at it every day and be a reminder that when I was on the fire department, that three children died in that house. I don't wanna keep looking at another house that's had a fire in it and sit there and be reminded of having flashbacks of what I went through in the past. Please, get rid of it. I beg you.
Councilman Beer?
Well, I was just gonna get to a motion. I was just gonna move that, uh, we give him, uh, sixty days to November sixteenth, basically sixty days or, they're about sixty-one. And have him to go into a, uh, with our legal, with a contract that he would undertake the demolition of the house to be completed in the sixty days.
Or? Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Briner, to, just so I'm clear on this, to have our city attorney draft a resolution to, uh, to go into contract with Mr.
Which is what he just said, right?
Actually, not a resolution, it would be a consent agreement between the city and, basically, it's a type of contract that says he's going to do it by that date. And if he doesn't, then, uh, the city can come, he grants the city permission to come in and do the work.
Okay. And what was the date? November sixteen?
November sixteen, I just think, you know, uh, yeah, uh, two months from now.
Okay. Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Briner. May I please have a roll call vote?
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Briner?
Yes.
And Beer?
Yes.
Seven zero approved. That's Resolution Three Three Nine Two.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, we will move out of old, well, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move into old business, item A, Streets Projects Update. Jake?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Um, I'm gonna step back just to, uh, last Thursday, um, where we milled Hallet Street in preparation for pavement. And on Friday, we milled Hillsdale Street and we finished all the chip seal and fog work also on Friday. Um, brings me to Monday today, we've repaved three quarters of Hallet Street from M ninety-nine to Reading Avenue. Um, that will be completed, the rest of that will be completed on Wednesday. On Tuesday, contractors will be completing utility patchwork around town, that was part of our street preservation project. And then I move to Wednesday. We will base Ripon Street on Wednesday afternoon. We will also finish paving Hallet on Wednesday and we will start paving on Hillsdale Street Wednesday afternoon. Thursday, we will top course the pavement on Ripon Street. We will mill Galloway Street on Thursday. And we will finish paving Hillsdale Street. Friday, um, we will finish paving Galloway Street and M ninety-nine will be paved on Friday and Saturday, um, between McDonald's and roughly Arch Avenue. I know it's a boatload for everybody to digest, so I will take questions on however you would like them.
Any questions for Jake? You got those net, dates pretty nailed down, huh Jake?
Well, there's only four general service staff and, uh, a few of us at DPS, so we've really gotta be on our toes here. It's gonna be a tough week for us, but, uh, we'll get through it.
You guys, uh, the chip, the fog seal, really good job on that. Really, really happy with that. Bruce?
Thanks to the police for not giving me a ticket when I parked out on the street with the signs up there. Of course, Jake came along, took them down afterwards, I appreciate that. Um, Brian, I seen you out there today, working on Ripon. I already got an email from, uh, Miss Cleveland saying, ew, Wednesday's gonna be done, or it's gonna be done, or worked on. There's no rain in the forecast till possibly late Thursday night, possibly, but that's it. So, I'll come home Wednesday and walk down and take a look and get on my hands and knees, see, praise God if it happens. If not, I'll say another word, but it won't be to God. So, um, I'm looking forward to seeing it getting done. You guys are doing a heck of a job right now. Brian, I appreciate you hanging in there with us. We've been rough on you, but, uh, not as rough as Ripon neighbors have been to me. So, I'm looking forward to seeing this done. Thank God.
Any more questions for Jake? Councilman Briner?
I have a question. Uh, it's kind of, has to do with my house and, and some power lines and most likely, uh, them doing Hallet Street. Um, it would've been last Friday, I get home from my house and the Comcast cable that runs across the street, um, to my house had ripped off my siding, sliced the Comcast wire, they pretty much wrapped it around my tree. I don't know what we do or what, or if they have insurance as far as that covers that or what they do. I was just gonna ask the question. I, I did report it, um, Todd Holtz is working with me from the city police to handle that, but I know they've been traveling down my road with the equipment. And I've lived there for five years and never had a problem until Friday, so.
So what typically is the case there? Um, I don't wanna bash any utilities, any utility or I guess, uh, cable supplier in this case, but they do have a minimum legal height to maintain over the road, which ninety-nine percent of the time, this, all this equipment will safely pass underneath. Um, my guess is it was probably drooped at one side or the other that, um, was below that minimum. And that the milling equipment probably caught it and/or a dump truck. Um, we've experienced the same problems on Ripon Street with concrete trucks. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm certain BPU trucks bring down Comcast li- lines quite often. Um, it's just a matter of maintenance on the lines for Comcast. Um, in most cases, it's easier for them to be torn down and then come back and put them back up. It's cheaper and easier for them to do it that way. Meanwhile, they leave them somewhat below the minimum most of the time.
So as far as damage to a property owner's house, what's that fall under?
You know, I have to get back with you on that, cause I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Alright.
I don't know if Comcast is responsible for that because of a low hanging line or if, um, the contractor would be, seems to me that Comcast should be, in my, my opinion.
Do we have any restrictions as far as what can travel down the roads?
Um, we do have a truck route, but, you know, we're also in the city and so oftentimes trucks have to get anywhere, hospitals, case in point. Um, you know, trucks need to get there, uh, my equipment needs to get there, street equipment needs to get there, we'll be in, in and around those blocks. Um, but I, I know that there actually is a, uh, it's a state guideline or state, state law in fact, for heights of overhanging lines, whether it be phone, cable or power. I don't know it off the top of my head. Um, that might be a better question for BPU, quite frankly.
Thank you.
But I can check into that too, I can find out for you.
Any more questions for Jake? Well, I'm really excited about Ripon Street. That's, uh, that is hugely, hugely exciting for the residents over there too. Um, you know, they've been, this is one, two, three, at least three tax seasons now where they've paid taxes on curbs and gutters that, that they don't have. Or, or curbs and sidewalks over there that they didn't have. They do have them now, but it just isn't right. It just, and I know everybody's gonna shake their heads, um, about a statement like this. And I know there's probably nothing we can do about it, but it's just, to me, that is just so unfair. I, I would be frustrated if I was them too. And I wish there was some way we could make some consolations to those residents over there.
Is there a way we could have a block party? I'm just thinking on top of my head.
I just, I feel like, you know?
Well, can we help? Is there anything we can, I mean, just help?
I don't know, I mean, probably on a personal level we can, we probably can't through the, I was gonna talk about this lead pickup later tonight. Dave's telling me that there's problems even with the very, very small expenditure that I thought, uh, council could handle, out of council's budget, since we do have a budget. Uh, a very modest one, but I just, man, I feel like if there's something we can do for those residents over there, it would be, it would behoove us to do so. Because they've really got the shaft the last couple of years and, uh, and hopefully things will be smoothed over in a couple of years once the project's done and. But, that's not a question for you Jake, by the way, cause I know there's nothing you can really say to that, but.
It, it may be a very little consolation, but understand that drive approaches and sidewalk are the responsibility. It, it may be a very little consolation, but understand that drive approaches and sidewalk are the responsibility of the homeowner and uh every single property owner on the ice grant project is probably getting two to three thousand dollars worth of driveway and sidewalk for them that they don't pay taxes for that maintenance.
That's, that is a consolation. That's something.
It may be a small consolation, but the city is giving that to them as part of this project. curb and gutter, yeah, they're paying taxes on. Sidewalk and drive approaches, no. That is their responsibility to replace those and maintain those and everybody's getting a new one, so it may be a small consolation, but it is one.
I, it's something. I mean, I wasn't aware of that, so.
And uh any, any driveway smaller or narrower than eight feet automatically got brought out to ten feet at no, no charge um as part of this because we just have to get standard drive approaches that normal cars fit in and out of, so. Some folks got pretty nice upgrades that uh really they wouldn't have had otherwise if they wouldn't have spent the money out of their pocket.
So Wednesday bases?
Wednesday afternoon, we're supposed to be based, base asphalt on the rest of it on Wednesday afternoon. They're combining us with a project in Jonesville, so they're gonna pave in Jonesville in the morning half, come over and base us in the second half of the day. Their plan is to leave the equipment right here in town, turn right around and top Ripon Street, Spring Street, Bacon Street, that whole, the whole area will get top course on it. Equipment's gonna sit right here and it's going right to M ninety-nine and they're gonna pave over M ninety-nine on Friday and Saturday, so. Um, this whole area is getting a lot of, a lot of paving done uh Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
Let the high school marching band go down first thing.
Yeah, hey. Someone should talk to Sean about that.
Homecoming is Friday night. Friday night.
Yeah?
So there should be new pavement down for that.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I don't even know how to feel about it. Like, I wanna, I wanna celebrate, but I'm ant, antsy about it, so. Okay, uh, old business, item B, twenty-three to twenty-five North Broad Street. Verbal update. Which is, Alan's not here anymore. Dave?
Okay then. Alan must not realize that this was his item. Um,
Yes.
Uh, so um Alan is working um with MEDC to put together a um RFP to solicit proposals to redevelop the site as part of the redevelopment ready communities process. MEDC will work with the communities to develop our, an RFP that will go out and be done professionally for that site. So Alan is working on that and we're also um, so that's a process of trying to find what's going to be put in there next. Um, also, um Alan is working on um the uh construction design for what's gonna be put on that exterior wall um to kind of enclose it and to tie the roof in so that it doesn't affect uh Mr. Dixon's building there to the north. Um, and also repair some of the items that were damaged during the demolition process because of close proximity of the church, the handrail and and some brick type work. So that, he's in the process of um getting that tied up so we can get that work done and then we're working with MEDC to put together an RFP.
Okay, any questions for Dave on that? Councilman Beer?
Are, are, are they talking about putting another building there or, or just, or just kind of up there?
It's, it's up in the air at this point, so we'll, um, I don't think there's any free conceived idea of what should be there. Um, but um this will help solicit RFPs for uh ideas.
Any more questions for Dave? Thanks Dave. And we will move into item C, MSCPA verbal update. Or Chris or?
I'll take this.
Okey dokey.
So um, because we've had a number of discussions on MSCPA over the last few months, um did wanna report to the council that uh the general manager and MSCPA, or former general manager, Paul Beckhuesen and MSCPA did agree to a separation agreement. Um, he had a contract until the end of June twenty-twenty um and um had a fourteen month severance on top of that. He agreed to leave. Um, we ended up paying him the severance amount, which was total about two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars. So that was the, that is what will be paid to Mr. Beckhuesen as part of the separation agreement, which was negotiated between MSCPA's attorney and Mr. Beckhuesen's attorney. In addition to that, we are in the middle of a pro- pro- independent process where we have a firm that's examining MSCPA and to determine what our next step will be as an agency, whether the agency moves to another organization like um MPPA, Michigan Public Power Association or AMP Ohio, which is the Ohio version. We're members of both agencies, so the independent in, um study is being done to look to determine what is in the agency and individual members' best interest as far as moving forward to basically incorporate MSCPA into a new agency. Uh, MSCPA as an agency itself has long-term obligations, whether it be from the pension liabilities. It has been in business for over forty years, so um it's a complicated process. Um, the engineer is examining this as part of that study, which we're supposed to have the first of November. And uh the idea would be after that study comes in, we will make, then make a decision on what direction. Either the agency goes as a whole or we go individually. In, in the interim with Mr. Beckhuesen gone, um we do have our finance director's presence until the end of the year and what it looks like we're, we're doing as an agency is going to sh- sign a short-term agreement with AMP Ohio, which has a lot of our power agreements um to provide those services on a contract basis until maybe the end of uh June twenty-twenty, if not sooner. Which will allow us to make a decision on where, how we move forward. I think that pretty much sums that up. If there are any questions, um I'd be happy to take them.
Um, any questions for Dave? No questions? Well, um, good job for the last several months with this Dave. I won't say any more than that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move into new business and we've got item A, design engineering and bidding services, West Fayette Street. Jake?
Um, I'll just, I'll start quickly with what this uh project is and some of the funding source. This is the small urban program. It, it's not a competitive grant. It's um uh, Region Two helps um, I guess, complete the rotation. We share it. We get it every fourth year. Um, it goes between the Hillsdale County Road Commission, Ju- City of Jonesville and uh geez, somebody, we get it, who's the third one? Third one within the county. I can't remember. It's, brain's not working. Anyway, we get it every fourth year. Um, this is the same program we use to use um to do State Street um in two different portions, um I believe two or three possibly. The last one being the lift station um right there on the edge of the city limits on the east edge. Um, the program's pretty straightforward, pretty cut and dry. They gave you three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand toward the program. Um, but you do have to have uh M dot certifications to do all of the paperwork and the documents. And uh so that's what we're asking for tonight is to proceed um with Fleece and Vanderbrink for the, the design engineering services, which includes the field work, the topo work and the documentation to get us into M dot's bidding letting cycle. And uh we need to, we need to get on this. We need to, we need to get it rolling now because we need that bid to come out and that letting to happen early in the year. Um, this will be also subject, if anybody recalls, the uh, the bat thing that we have to deal with. Um, so does any trees have to be removed? We'd have to do that prior to March, so it's important to get this ball rolling, to get this construction done next summer. So we're recommending uh fifty-eight thousand to do that initial um preliminary engineering work on Fayette. And scope of the project is from the railroad tracks um just west of the Saint Joe River going east to Northwest Street. At this time, uh will be full reconstruct um with some very large stormwater infrastructure in place. Um, most of the stormwater from the whole hill area, that whole north side of town currently flows through undersized storm mains um down toward like BPU's office and dumps into the river there and also um near WCSR. Um, this would divert a lot of that water and run it, run it down to the creek at Fayette. Um, also includes a large um box culvert. Many of you would say is a bridge. Um, but another large box culvert, even larger than what was on Ripon Street and also incorporate the large sidewalk that, that comes through there too. Um, other than that, it's pretty much typical construction, curb, gutter, pavement. Um, we're not a hundred percent certain until we uh do some more survey work on uh water services, water mains, some of the BPU side of it, but the rest of it certainly is full reconstructed.
Any questions for Jake?
Yes. Go ahead. When was this picture taken? Uh, probably came off of Google Earth. Not sure.
It's been a while because I don't see my favorite cell tower.
I didn't take it. It's probably just came off of Google Earth as a representation to make it easy for folks to see where it was at.
That's just one thing. I was just noticing there wasn't the cell tower there.
Councilman Stutchel?
Yeah, I'm.
Sorry Will, I didn't see you.
Um, yeah, this is a uh street that is, the north side is in Ward Two and the south side is in Ward Three. And um, the main thing I think, once this gets going, we need to have some meetings with the local residents so that they can be fully informed. One of the great uh problems with that street, which I've walked along for a long time now, is that there's no storm sewers in that section between West Street and the river. And so someone evidently must have thought that, well, water goes downhill, so we don't need any drainage. Uh, it wasn't a very well-engineered project in the first place. So uh this is urgently needed, as are so many of the streets in our town, but I'm glad we can get a, get a grant and get this moving.
Just two questions. First, my concern with Vanderbrink is if I recall properly, they missed some key points when they did the wastewater treatment plant. And we just don't wanna have the same situation where we get halfway into this, oh, we didn't know, we didn't know, type of thing. So I'm just asking them to take a really much deeper dive than maybe normal because I, like I said, their wastewater treatment plant was a, was an issue because they, and they should know. I mean, I, they're the professionals. So that's my concern. The other concern I have is it says in here, you're gonna allow them to remove any trees that's in their way. Is there any way we can maybe somewhat oversee that? Because there's some big beautiful oak trees there.
Absolutely. We will save every tree we can save.
Well, I know, but I mean, it's, I just, it's just easier to cut them all down. We just start with the clean street and that's, that's my concern. We just don't butcher it.
The only time we remove the trees is when ADA law handcuffs us in, in federal law for Americans with Disabilities Act. That's the only time we remove them if they handcuff.
Okay.
Um, we do, you, you, yeah. I, I can't begin to tell you what we do to save trees.
Okay.
Uh, we're trying to save some up on Oak Street right now. Um, I, I would like to address, so my response to you, I guess, on the wastewater treatment plant. Um, I equate that to uh, I say we have a couple Ford dealers. We have one in Coldwater, we have one in Hillsdale. They're both Ford dealers. Um, but they're different people, different services, different employees and they're operated by different folks and managed by different folks. Um, you know, the wastewater treatment plant was managed by the Coldwater one and I think that's no reason that we wouldn't do business with the Ford dealer in Hillsdale.
Right.
Um, they are two different groups. I know they share the same name, but they are not the same fe- people. And I, I think Jeff's um proven um to us and probably to you even personally that, that he can handle this job and he does a good job for us. Um, Hallett Street was engineered by them. Um, everybody knows that that went very well and, and Dr. Morrissey, having a meeting with the residents, we did that at Hallett. Um, and I, I think it really helped that project go a lot better. Everybody knew what to expect before it happened. Um, so in that regard, I, I think we have history with this group and, and I'm comfortable continuing to use them.
Thank you.
Councilman Sharp?
I've met with the gentleman too, Vice Vanderbrink, for the street projects many times and he was very straightforward with me on questions I asked. And I grilled him quite hard at often, uh quite often. This, they are a different group and um I have faith in that they don't that they'll come under our scrutiny again. But I, I think they'll do a fine job in here because this street does need to be fixed. I don't care where it ends up going to. It's just one of the streets in the city. It needs to be fixed. It's a, it's a well-heavily traveled road and it is in poor condition. And you go down by the Saint Joe River and you take a look at that bridge there, that it's, it's amazing we haven't had anything that'd fall in there yet. So it's, it's a need, desperately a need.
I'd like to point out one more thing if I may, um and that is the fact that these dollars can only be spent on a major street. So these can't be used on a local. Um, these couldn't be used on Westwood or parts of, you know, Glen Dale or Highland. These must be used on a major street, which Fayette qualifies for. Again, why we used it on State Street in the past and Fayette would be our, our choice for majors at this point that, that needs attention, so.
Any more questions? Councilman Briner?
I just wanna say that this section of Fayette has uh needed to be done for a very long time. It doesn't matter where you drive on that road. You, it, you, the best, smoothest spot's probably right down the middle of the road. Um, and I uh, I, I travel like that a, a couple of times. I'm glad uh Chief Hepner's never been behind me. But uh he probably knows the exact same thing. He's probably following me actually. Um, so yeah, it, it's, I'm glad that we're, we're doing this and uh it's a well-traveled road for the college and for people in the community. I uh, when I lived in North Adams, would come into State Road, turn right on Oak and then turn left on Fayette and go down the back way into Hillsdale. Uh, plenty of times, so it's, it's a well-used road. Um, and I'm glad to see that we're, we're doing something about it now.
Any more questions? Comments for Jake? Thanks Jake. There's no more conversation. I would entertain a motion to approve the proposal to proceed with engineering and bidding services with Fleece and Vanderbrink for the sum of fifty-eight thousand dollars.
So moved. Sport.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Sharp. May I please have a roll call? City Clerk?
Councilperson Sharp?
Yes.
Stutchel?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Briner?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
And Morrissey?
Yes.
Seven zero approved.
Thanks Katie. Let's move on to item B, U S Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration Controlled Substances and Alcohol Misuse Testing Policy. It says, "Our drug and alcohol testing policy of two thousand fourteen has been outdated to meet the requirements of the FDA. The only change is the replacement of the word opiate to opioid." Government, I swear. This revision has been completed and requires the city council's approval. Is there any conversation on this? You guys don't wanna have a twenty-minute debate about changing a word?
He's not here.
Councilman Beer?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, what's the difference between the two?
That's the same thing.
Good, good.
Um, this policy applies to all of our CDL drivers and the reason it has to be changed is opioid is um natural and I believe opiates or vice versa include synthetics. That's all it is. It allows to include natural and synthetic drugs. That's why the name change.
Okey dokey.
That's it.
Alright, any uh, any further? Questions, comments, guys? I'd entertain a motion to uh revise the FDA drug and alcohol testing policy, changing opiate to opioid.
So moved.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We just changed a word. Good job, guys. Okay, we will move into item C in new business, uh leaf pickup contest. So um, I've had a couple po- preliminary meetings. As you guys know, and the new council members, I'm sure you guys know too, we changed our leaf pickup policy. We are now subcontracting it out to Modern Ways to Pick Up. One of their requirements is that the leaves are placed in bags. So there was some pretty, there was some upset residents uh concerning this. Uh, I don't blame them for being upset. Uh, we weren't very good about getting out in front of the biggest reason that we needed to make the change policy because they changed the, the uh, the DEQ, changed the requirements of all municipalities to hold their own co- compost sites. So it was essentially something that we either would have to put a bunch of money into our compost site or quit. Co- eventually we would have had to have quit collecting leaves within the next couple of years, so we made the change. Uh, we saved some money that I think we can clearly show is going to street work, uh which is a good thing. But there has been some concerns and I have, myself have had many concerns uh regarding the elderly, the infirm, because this is labor intensive to put, leave. Because this is labor intensive to put leaves in bag, bags, it's, it adds quite a bit of labor to it. So, uh, I met with Chief Rogers, Jeffrey Rogers, uh, from the college as a representative of the goal program. And he wanted to meet with me because he was, um, anticipating putting together a contest for the college kids. To do some sort of community service, so like the different groups at the college, I'm not sure if we're talking about like fraternities and sororities or chess club or whatever. But the fact is, he wanted them to do a community service, um, contest. And the winner would receive something, some sort of commendation from the city, uh, a, a pizza party or whatever. And I said, I've got a great contest for them. And one that's easily, easy to record too, is leaf pickup. Whoever bags the most leaves, I thought we could have, you know, the residents that need it the most, being, you know, the elderly. That might not have family members to help or people, people that are disabled, um. So, I guess we're in the, uh, initially what I wanted to talk to you guys about was maybe, uh, maybe appropriating a tiny bit of money, like a hundred bucks, so we could give a pizza party to these kids for softening the blow to the residents. Uh, on something that's been controversial in the community and, uh, a big change for people. So, but Dave, Dave and I spoke about it before the meeting amongst other things, and Dave says that we can't spend city money on that, uh, even if it's a city contest, so. We, we haven't, Jake has got the potential pickup dates now. We still have to have another meeting with Chief and Jake and Dave and I to just kind of hammer out the details. But I guess we're going to have to figure out some other way to reward these kids. And it, I, there's no problem with bringing them up to council and, yeah, giving them a certificate or commendating them that way. Um, but if you guys have any other ideas, I think this would be good for the community, I do, and, uh.
I'm saying King or Donald, no.
Yeah. So any suggestions or? Councilman Beer?
I was just thinking, as far as we have, uh, eight council people, everybody fills in twenty dollars of their own money.
Yeah.
Can we do that? Is that?
Well, yeah, we could do that, sure.
And then you kind of get past the legality of.
Sure.
And I, I don't think it's going to hurt anybody here. And if, if, actually you wouldn't have to have everybody because you're just talking a hundred bucks and if, oh shoot, what, five of us did it? There's your hundred bucks, so, but I think we'd probably do.
Very good. Yeah, sure. So I don't know, Will, uh, any more discussion, guys?
Good idea.
Yeah, it's something. Yeah, you know, I was hoping it's something that if it worked out well this year, it's something that we could do every year, um, so.
I think leaves are going to come down early this year, I just got that feeling they're coming down early this year, so.
Well, we've got an October pickup date and a December pickup date, so.
October would be light, November would be bad.
Oh, excuse me, December.
December?
Yes, December sixteenth, here comes Jake. Yeah. The, the dates are scary, Jake.
They're October twenty-sixth, which I've got nothing but hammering that we pick them up too early or we pick them up too late. So you've got October twenty-sixth and December fourteenth.
Councilman Beer?
Uh, when does the college get off on, uh, winter break?
Beginning of December or, no, mid-December.
Around the tenth.
Will wouldn't know.
I don't know anymore. It's around that.
Yeah.
When do you get off?
It's the fourteenth Saturday.
Yes.
That's the last day of exams, so you would have, that's exam week, uh, I don't think anybody would be able to do that during exam week, they'd be able to do the October twenty-sixth though.
They would probably have to do the October one.
It would have to be the October one, it's the December one they'd have their, their exams.
Oh, sure. Well, so there's another hurdle, so. These things can't ever be simple.
If I may, the dates are pretty well set with Modern because they, they pick up for other municipalities too. Um, I, I don't know that there's any real wiggle room on them, I think those are the dates we, we have. We could request something different, but I don't think we'd have much success unless it was either very early or even later, so.
All right, well, I guess.
And what were those dates again, Jake?
October twenty-sixth and December fourteenth. We'll do a brush collection that coincides with the October twenty-sixth leaf collection. They're both Saturdays, they will always be Saturdays.
Well, that's good.
Of course, going along with this too, uh, why limit it to the college, I'm thinking the high school. Also have so many Huskies, we have, we have the academy, the, uh, and most, you know, and the high school kids, they're local.
No, no, sure, I mean, the bigger the better, I'd say. Sure, or maybe we could do two, I don't know, maybe we could have one for October and December, it's.
Maybe do the local, uh, kids on the December one because they're going to be off school. Well, uh, public schools probably don't get off until about the twentieth, twenty-ish, right around there, so.
And so we could use it as a boilerplate to see how it turns out, so. I don't know, it's something, guys, it weighs on me worrying about the residents, having to do all this work and being the, one of the people that voted for it. But I guess that's what we're up here for, to make tough, tough decisions, but it is what it is. Councilman Beer?
Well, of course, if that pilot program that we, the council did approve at the last meeting, it's for the fifty-five and older. That some of these people that aren't able to take care of their homes will move over to the, the apartments. And what will, it's actually create some more homes for people to come in and work on and take care of.
Oh, yeah, uh, you know, speaking of that, I, uh, I forgot to tell you, to tell you guys. Um, Garden Club had their ninetieth, uh, birthday last Thursday, and so I came and spoke. But they had a, uh, they had a, a, a fantastic speaker, I can't think of what her name was. Um, but she spoke for about an hour about gardens, she was really good though. And one thing she said was, "Put your leaves on your garden." That is like out of her entire speech, she stressed nothing more than that, putting your leaves on your garden. So, that's something to tell residents too, when they ask about their leaves, if they've got a garden, she says it's the best thing you can do for your garden. Is to put your leaves on them. Not oak leaves, is that right? No?
All right, any more discussion, guys? Obviously no action items, so. Okay, uh, we will move into miscellaneous reports. I've got one appointment, Mrs. Mary Wolfram to Tifa and a coinciding resignation from Mr. Soka. Uh, who is resigning off Tifa, and his letter is in here. So, um, I will say I did, thus far, all the appointments I've made to Tifa have been people that have owned property downtown. So, uh, I, I was a little apprehensive about this, but Tifa did give a unanimous recommendation to appoint Mrs. Wolfram to the board. So, any discussion, guys, on Robert's, um, resignation or Mrs. Wolfram's appointment?
I just want to make a correction about the rough draft, because I know Mary Wolfram had a piece to make that happen. It's not just a coffee house, it's a coffee house, it's an art studio, it's offices, it's apartments, it's retail shop, and it's also a nightclub. So it's not just a coffee place.
Okay, and then Rough Draft was not a Tifa project, was it? I'm pretty sure that's not the Tifa district, so.
No, but it, it did go through the city because of the, we had to be the vehicle in which for the, the fifty percent, um, funds from MEDC.
Okay.
I mean, I'll just, I mean, I've worked with Mary, uh, I know there were some apprehensions on stuff, and I, I actually contacted the MEDC about her working relationship with them. Uh, I also contacted, uh, CL Enterprises about their working relationship with her, and they said she's very thorough, very detail oriented. And the Dawn, according to the MDC, had, uh, kind of lost life like three times between David and Mary, they kind of brought that whole project back to life. But I know Mary is very, uh, detail oriented, looks at, you know, crosses all the i's, dots all the t's, or vice versa, but, uh.
We, uh, Mary and I met a couple of times to talk about this appointment before it happened, so, um. Here it is. Any more discussion, Councilman Briner?
Um, I think Mary will be an asset to the Tifa board, um, just, I think it's a great thing. You know, she doesn't own anything downtown, but what she's done for the downtown district. Um, and it speaks, uh, highly that everybody on the Tifa board wants her on the board.
Yep. Any more discussion, Councilman?
Will.
Morrissey?
I just, uh, question, do we, uh, send a letter to the retiring members of these boards to thank them for their service?
I don't think that's something we do, no.
We really ought to. Doesn't cost us anything, a nice la- letter from the mayor.
That's true, that's true.
And, uh, our, our committee should know that we appreciate their work too.
Probably put, uh, Mike Pawnee on that list too, David.
That's a good idea, Councilman Morrissey. Councilman Sharp?
I'm not against Mary being put on Tifa, I just hope she keeps her focus straight on Tifa and doesn't do what she's done in the past sometimes, she can really stir the pot. I hope she just keeps her focus on the detail that's in front of her. Um, I'm all in favor, but I think she's a good fit, and that's about all I'm going to say, because I've talked to Mary before and I think she'll do a good job. I really do. Just keep her focus on the mission in front of her.
Well, she was being paid to consult by the Tifa board for a number of months, and she asked to be appointed, and I, uh, I told her no because she was a paid consultant. And after that, she handed in a resignation. She, she, uh, she, a- a- actually, they, they, they cut her hours down to zero, Tifa did first. But they hadn't essentially ended her contract, so as a, a compromise, she put in a resignation letter for her contract completely. So there would be no conflict of interest for this appointment to be made, so. If there's no, any more discussion, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Mary to the Tifa board.
Support. Seconded.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Stutchel, seconded by Councilman Sharp, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will move on to general public comment during this time, uh, same rules apply, please limit your comment to five minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. Um, please state your name, and during this time, you may speak on anything you like, podium's open.
Uh, one thing, I have been coming in Hallet lately, it is a lot better. I can't believe Mr. King hasn't been up here to say how nice it is. Seeing how he did so much complaining about how bad it was, even though it was that way when he moved where he moved, he knew the road. But I still can't, um, Galloway Drive, that's, how far is that being redone? Because I know Westwood is much worse than Galloway Drive by far, I just don't understand that. The leaves. I think if you're going to do a contest, then all three colleges in the city and the schools should be involved in it, and you shouldn't be by how many bags they fill, it should be by the pound. Because otherwise, I mean, I can throw two leaves in a bag and call it full, so you know, you got to have a weight system there. Forty-two Union, I'm glad it was brought up, even though they never did finish what they were supposed to finish that the planning commission said about the fence. There's still no fence, I don't know what they ended up, if they lied on their report saying they were done with that contract, which they were supposed to send a letter here three or four months ago, I don't know what they did, but, but they never did finish their contract. As far as I can tell anyhow. Um. Some of these applications, like this is for a, a Tifa facet improvement. A company owns the property, but the person that filled out the paper is saying he's the owner, which actually it's another guy that's the owner of the company. I don't understand that, it was, um, how that happens, um. Another thing that was said, and I, I'm not sure why this was said, is, this was a quote from somebody. Um, feels that it would be a wise point to just let something lay, let things cool and reopen at a later date. That kind of sounds to me like, well, let's sneak it in when we can and get it passed or something. It just, I don't think the wording's quite what it should have been. Um, this is something from Mary, I'm not sure who, but, uh, has heard complaints about board members who voted on your own eligibility as possible conflicts of interest. I still haven't seen anything about that, but if that's a whistleblower, then I would think there's federal or state laws that say you have to investigate that. The accusation was made, so I think that should be investigated a little bit. Um, I was reading Mary's thing, and, and I know she was a council member. I didn't, I guess I didn't actually realize she worked for the city though. I thought she worked for Hillsdale Policy Group, which is all her husband's business, he's all the officers in the business. But, I mean, and that group worked for the city, I'll agree with that, but I didn't know she actually worked for the city. Which, I'm not sure about that. Um, then the other thing that I had was, in her application, that she would like to see further economic development such as that it can provide jobs and opportunity for many more of the low income population. And I guess I'm not sure why, because we don't have housing for low income, because it keeps getting voted down. Mr. Bell, he pushes this low income, I think that's not the proper word to say, I mean, it makes people like me, I'm, I'm low income, I think it puts, it knocks people down, it doesn't give them what they deserve. I mean, we're all equal, who cares how much money we make or whatever, we should all be equal people, I mean, that's the way I look at it, thank you.
Thanks Jake. Any more public comment?
Good evening, my name's Greg Kurtz, I live in Westwood Drive, got a couple of things. Uh, I know I'm jumping the gun on this, but I'm, uh, talking about the condos on East Bacon Street that are being built. And they're asking for a neighborhood enterprise zone, so they can reduce the property taxes for people who purchase those condos. And, and they're asking for, if they get, if they grant this, it'll be three to five years that they might not have to pay any taxes. And then, and their taxes can be reduced for fifteen years under the, uh, neighborhood enterprise zone. And these condos are, are costing two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars and upward of three hundred thousand dollars or more. And if you grant this, uh, property tax, uh, decrease for these, for people who can afford them, I mean, that's, that's, that's crazy. If you can, you can pay that much money for condos, you don't need, uh, uh, to have your property taxes reduced for that long. We pay property taxes in this city, I don't see us getting any reductions. So, I hope this, uh, council, when this comes up, will not go along with that. And also, once again, like I did two and a half years ago, I'm going to bring up, uh, Westwood Drive again. Uh, it's one of the worst streets in the city. Uh, we've had a couple more water main breaks this last year, and one of them that has been fixed is now settled. And it's worse than the rest of the potholes up there, uh, which is, they're just terrible. And Councilman Briner was saying about West Fayette Street, going down there, the only place you can drive, uh, on it is, uh, in the middle. Westwood Drive, there's the only place you can drive, nothing. And, uh, there were a couple of councilmen when I was here before, plus, uh, the city manager told me and assured me that this was a priority, and this was two and a half years ago, and I've been here before. Uh, I don't, I don't see where it's a priority, and I don't, I, and you can't give me a date or, you know, any times when this can be fixed. Or even if you're thinking about it, it, you know, you might as well just make this a dirt road, because it'd be better than what we've got now. And I would certainly like to, uh, you know, you give an answer of when this can be fixed, it's terrible. And the two streets, uh, east of us are terrible too. And it's long overdue to fix these, and I, you know, I'm frustrated and I'm angry. And I tell you, if you, if you grant this neighborhood enterprise zone, and reduce property taxes for people who can pay that kind of money for those condos, why should we pay property taxes? We should refuse to. And, uh, I'm, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. I don't think anybody should pay property taxes, but that's just me personally. I think if, if the government can take away your property, if you don't pay taxes, it's really not your property in the first place, so, but I'm crazy radical, so. Any more public comment? Mr. Hendy?
I'd like to thank, uh, council, city manager, David Mackey, uh, even Jake Hamel. I'm a hard guy to impress, but, uh, I haven't seen this much roadwork in this town in decades. It really feels good that we're finally getting some, something for our tax dollars. Uh, and then I'd like to talk about what Jack McLean just said, Mary used to be our, um, council, councilwoman, and she also was our ED, and they found out she was violating the charter, so that's when Hillsdale Policy Group started, and then she counseled the city from there, and, so that's how that worked, but, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the podium and go into the city manager's report. Dave?
Um, thank you, Mayor, just a few items here, one, um, um, wanna say for the, the entire city, um, it's with Hard Heartset, I, I tell you that we lost one of our longtime employees, Marsha Button. Um, she actually worked over twenty-nine years with the city, um, she retired in six, sixteen, so shortly after I came here, so I did get to know her, um, so she retired in sixteen after twenty-nine years of service and, and just passed away this past week. Um, so, um, I know she's very near and dear to all of DPS because they've all worked with her, um, but, uh, all the city staff, um, knew her, and she did a tremendous job and trained most of the DPS staff. So, with that, I just wanna, um, uh, say that we're very sad for her passing. Um, also, um, I wanna basically, um, talk about the airport and the, the fly-in we just had. Um, it was a tremendous event, I think all of you know that, Ray with the Exchange Club and their breakfast, um, my understanding is there were over two thousand people who attended the event. The Exchange Club had almost nine hundred breakfasts, breakfasts that they served, um, everyone did a tremendous job, from the airport manager, the support staff, the airport advisory committee, uh, the Exchange Club, um, everyone who came and participated, it was a beautiful day, and, um, all, I think, enjoyed themselves, and I wanna, you know, hold that out as a tr- you know, just a tremendous example of how we can put on good events and serve the public from the broader area.
Can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
The day before, Marshall had a fly-in, and we went up to that and it was a complete bust. I mean, it was cloud-covered, it was a complete bust, they canceled it by, I think, nine-thirty it was over. Excellent job.
That reminds me also that the Civil Air Patrol, our squadron here, worked the event all day, um, taxiing aircraft and, and many other things, so it, it was truly a, uh, city and county-wide event that went over very well, and I'm sure Ray, Ray could report on that a little bit more. Um, and with that, I think I'm gonna let council comment, and if there's any questions, um, we'll go from there.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave? Councilman Bryner?
I don't have any questions, I just wanna, um, continue with the fly-in. Um, I said it in the paper, um, and, you know, I'll say it again, I can make a list easily, uh, tonight in probably about fifteen minutes of a hundred people that I could thank personally for, uh, uh, the fly-in this year. Um, it was a lot of work, um, a lot of help from the community, a lot of local businesses, um, a lot of people giving their personal time. I think Penny, were you out there painting picnic tables? Penny was out there painting picnic tables along with Mayor, um, so, a lot of people, right there's two, Dave, Ginger, you know, Civil Patrol, or Civil Air Patrol, um, Travis from the Airport Advisory Committee, I, I could go on and on and on and would be here until ten o'clock, so, um, I just want everybody to know that was involved in the fly-in, thank you very much from the deepest part of my heart, um, I hold that close to me, um, as being president of Exchange Club this year, um, and volunteering my time in that service club, so, thank you, everyone.
Awesome. Any more questions for Dave? Before we move into council comment or comments?
Just, um, we're supposed to have a public safety meeting coming up, and that's gonna involve you, so, just wanted to give you a heads up when it's coming. Dave, you'll get that taken care of.
Yes, and I think, um, Chief Hebner reached out to, to Mr. Bryner about that.
I, I have dates.
Getting that set up.
That I am sending via email to you guys.
Appreciate it, because I know we wanna get this taken care of.
Yeah, and that reminds me, next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, we also have a Public Service Committee meeting, I think at five-thirty, um, so we'll be talking about the right-of-way planting, um, and some other items that have come up.
Okay, any more comments for Dave? I was gonna ask about the right-of-way planning, since, uh, we talked to it, talked about it at council months ago, but it sounds like we're gonna, there's gonna be a meeting about it soon, so it's good enough for me. Um, any, any council comment?
Yes, I have one.
Councilman Stutel?
Last week, my wife and I, along with Gary and Mary Wolfram, met with the entire, uh, CL Enterprise leadership team. We met with the owner, we met with VP of Finance, VP of Marketing, uh, VP of Restaurants and Bars, and had a really exciting discussion. And just to kinda give everybody up to date, up to date, they are still working on securing eleven million dollars of project funds, which they believe they're gonna have secured in the next few months, and what they're doing is they wanna be shovel-ready when they, when that all happens. And one of the things that Peter did say was, you know, this is business, and you really don't get excited about business, but, um, regards to the Kiefer Hotel, they're very excited about this project, and they're just really looking forward to that, and he personally handed me, and I like to share this, everybody wanna come take a look, I have to give it back to him, but this is a set of renderings of what the hotel's gonna look like, from the lobby, the restaurant, the rooms, the hallways, and it's gonna follow a nineteen-twenty train type of motif type of thing. So, it was, uh, it's ve- it's very good stuff, it's, they're gonna keep the original floor and the ceiling, but, uh, it's pretty neat stuff, so I welcome everybody to take a look at that.
Is it, is there gonna be a vault in there where Al Capone could have had stuff hidden, too?
A vault?
Like Kilmeraldo.
I do have something, Mr. Mayor.
Is that, oh, go ahead, one second, is that, uh, is that rendering on their webpage? Because I know they have lots of renderings.
I, I have no idea, I, I'm not a.
Just wanted to be able to let the community.
They're, they're welcome to come take a look at this.
Okay, awesome, thanks, Greg. Councilman Sharp?
Yes, to the gentleman, I haven't forgotten about you at Westwood Drive. It's, it's embarrassing to go up there, it's a third-world street, but you also have to understand, when we do this project, and I say when, not if, there's a lot, there's a lot more involved than what Ripon was, because of the drainage, the springs up there, everything, it's, it's gonna be very intense, and it's embarrassing when you go up there and you look at all those beautiful homes up there, and they have to have a street like that. I mean, it's, it's terrible, and I, I ask any council members, "Please, go up to Westwood Drive, take a drive up there," or walk up there even better.
I used to live over there.
It's, it's just unbelievable, but we talked about making it a dirt road, that wouldn't work, because it would wash down the hill right over to west, or, um, the circle down there, it would end up in their yard, but with the old former mayor's house, where he lives, it would be basically there. That was an option I had mentioned, and no, that wasn't gonna fly either, but I haven't forgotten about you. I'm on Mr. Mackey all the time about, "When's Westwood Drive gonna be looked at?" I haven't forgotten you guys at all, so just wanted to let you know that. All right? Thank you.
Any more council comment? Councilman Bryner?
Um, the Hillsdale County Fair is next week, so, uh, I'm sure there's plenty of opportunities to volunteer, uh, time. I know the Donut Hut usually is looking for volunteers, all the money raised from the Donut Hut there, uh, goes back into the County Fair, uh, to improve buildings and whatnot down there, uh, so if you're looking for volunteer hours or anything like that, I know, uh, I know I'll be down there, let's see, Monday, Tuesday, and then all day Saturday, so, um, it's really a great event, and, uh, what is it, the most popular fair on earth? Is that what it is? So, I'd believe it, it's a good fair, so if you can help out, uh, any way, um, possible, I know Lori Hall is the fair manager down there, um, she'd be happy to, to take any volunteers whatsoever.
Awesome, yeah, good, I'll be down there myself, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I'm working two booths, so. Councilman Morsy?
Uh, we owe a vote of thanks to the Mitchell Library, who, uh, they gave us a nice tour of, uh, the walking tour of the downtown here, the, just before the meeting tonight. Councilman Stutel was there, the mayor was there, I was there, and there was another lady from the community who was there, and, uh, it's a very nice thing for them to do.
Yes, sir, it was, it was, uh, very fascinating. Anybody wants to know about local history, Joanne Miller, uh, and of course, Dan Byers, sure, everybody knows, those two are the people to get ahold of, they'll tell you anything you wanna know, basically, so. Any more council comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Morsy to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, meetings adjourned.